Jack, can you read it, my friend?
Welcome in.
Under your work, Mr. Chairman. All right, we'll drive on. We'll head on into the chapter improvement project. Jack and I talked a little bit about, we'll have just a brief discussion. We'll include the school in this, about their possible state funding and that and all that. About just looking down the road, again, I believe, and I think you guys do too, you don't get caught in the head in saying that something's coming up four, five, eight, 10 years down the road, you at least need to be thinking about it, none of us may be either. But I mean, we need to be sort of thinking about what might be coming up, so I'd be happy with sort of rest of that.
Well, let's go back up there on public schools, just ended with bill treated and all this, Captain Foster, most of it had to do with that, but we really don't know what the state's gonna do. We do know that over the past couple of years, they have made appropriations for public schools, and then turned around and asked for part of it back. This past year, they did, that was about a million and a half, a few was.
About one point five.
So, but I've never been able to figure out why they do that, why they promise you this and then take part of it back. If they can't afford to give you what they want to give you, which is they, what you gotta solve with, plan to work around that, that would be a lot simpler to do. But, the other thing that gave us a double whammy on that was, they made appropriations, took some of it back, and then the process also increased salaries and health insurance and everything for employees without really thinking that a lot of employees were exclusive on local pay. And once the county adopts these budgets, sets its expenditures, you don't have a whole lot of options to go back to their local school, let's have some of them now and see if they can. They did that this year, maybe it was adjustments, because we may adjust the state teachers, they also adjust a local pay teacher. Unfortunately, I think on our, our situation here, most of our local pay teachers are a little bit of salary skipped, and so you didn't have quite the impact, it was double around. I don't know what we're gonna do this year, but there are still struggles trying to balance the state, but what the unemployed insurance they gotta pay back and all those other things to go for, so there's a good chance that, that they're gonna get into, same thing with the school budgets this year. And the other thing I think you'll be aware of, and I talked to Superintendent Duncan about it, they're really concerned about being able to get through this year in the black. And there is no, it's about to be, but they had a pretty good balance a year ago, probably back home. So, I think he has some real concern about that. School board's gonna be called about, we had a school liaison meeting the other night with, and Kevin Ryan, and they're gonna have a meeting among themselves to look at their financial situation. I can't recall the exact date.
February 11.
February 11. Talking about their situation as far as this year, and what they're hearing from the DPI, as far as planning out cases for next year. They know that we just don't have the resources, nor does most any other county in the state to pick up with the state's short, short call, or so, to understand that. It's good to think about it, because we don't have an adversarial relationship with the Board of Education. They understand what we're doing wrong, they understand what they've got. If there's an issue, then it's gonna take both Board of County Commissioners and Board of Education to sit down and try and figure out how to come to some solution for it. So, there, we need to have a joint meeting with them, and we talked about a date for that. Do you remember when that was, Ronnie?
February 26.
February 26.
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
That would be a meeting of both Board's, Board of Education, Board of County Commissioners. Is that, if you look at your calendar schedule, do you mind knowing any conflicts they might have with that?
That's on Tuesday, 26.
And I think they're gonna try to schedule it to make it, make corporate headquarters follow up better.
Six P.M.
I'm not sure exactly. Most likely about six o'clock usually when we get up. That'll give them a chance, take a look at where they are in their financial situation, kinda like what we do today. See how they're gonna be able to make it through this year, and what changes they're gonna have to be able to deal with next year budget. The problem with the, the way the school budgets are, and y'all learned this over in the school, for County Commissioners the other day, about the school financial and school funding and so forth, is that schools don't have a recourse to go back to the state and say, "We need more money than what you're giving us." Basically, the state says, "If this is what you're getting, make the best of it." And they only get their funding from basically three sources, the state, because it's the primary funder for public education, for current operating expenses, which is about 65 to 70 percent. 70 percent. The counties which put in, oh, maybe 25 percent, and then 5 percent probably Kevin from the federal government.
Yeah.
Most of the federal government, such as earmark for specific purposes, for special classes and so forth, you have a long way to do with that. But the only recourse Board of Education have, when they're lacking money to do the things they wanna do, is to come back to y'all and say, "I need this, if you can give us more money." And we've been able to work it out pretty good here, but that's not the case with a lot of other counties, there have been lawsuits between Boards of Education and Boards of County Commissioners. There have been, and there's been, I like that, like four lawsuits in the past four, five years between the boards. In that case, everybody loses, they end up getting a little bit more money, I think it really hurts the working relationship between the county and the Board of Education. And y'all got a good working relationship with them right now, because everybody wants the same thing, want a good education for their kids, a decent place to study. So, the primary responsibility, and I've preached it forever, the primary responsibility is very, very expensive for the schools, squarely on the state's shoulders. And they have not, in my opinion, adequately funded public education. And this, on the past couple of years, this goes back to early years, they had a case called the Landro case, and it's, I don't know if they ever got this on, Ronnie, do you?
We did, yeah.
Where they said, "Well, you're not creating all the school systems," because basically, if you can look at it, and I've done some research on it, they don't fund all the school systems the same way. You can look at the state funding per pupil for schools in other parts of the state compared to ones in our part, you'll see there's a disparity between per pupil expenditure. And why is that? They've got a few little quick quirks and twists in there that they use to fund some districts more than others. We said earlier, we have only two K-12 schools in the entire state, and they're both in barely remote areas, and out of Haila more so than Highlands. And that, and you have, you have a smaller number of students, so when the state's allocating money based on the number of students you have, it's hard to say that we got, and we don't have 25 students in every class, and now Haila we got 120 students, kindergarten through 12th grade. And so, the state will only fund, fund one teacher per number of students, and so it doesn't fit well with our geography. We need to ask for some special advisementation from the state to account for the fact that we have, and Kevin probably dealt with it more than I have, because of our unique situation with our schools here. So, that's something that we probably oughta ask the state to consider as well.
The state, the state allocates money in lots of classroom size. They give a teacher forever, I believe it's 20 kindergartens, first graders, something dumb with the exact numbers, and maybe 22 at the next age of, which are blocks, problem is when you live in the mountains, your kids don't come in blocks of 24. You've got, especially now out in Highlands, you have a, we have a few more, not tremendous more, but the schools this year's got a few more locally teachers. Because in Mecklenburg County, they take that money and digs that pretty good, or in Wake County.
They're pretty compact down there, even though.
And they seem to have larger schools, too. They've got larger schools, which makes the number break up in lots of 20, 22, 24, 26, whatever it is. That creates a little bit of a financial hardship, but it's always been manageable here. They just can't get, basically, Kevin's last couple of years, they're gonna be closed, it looks like.
Well, there's, I'm just saying, y'all know it, it's gonna be a real challenge for this year, for next year, and we're gonna sit down and have to make some decisions on what you're able to do.
With the budget cuts, because he cut, he cut about a half million dollars out of their budget, wasn't he, Jack?
Yeah.
And they adjusted several things to do that, and I asked him at night pretty straight up how that was going, he said, "Fine," he said, "Do they need to reassess here at the end of the season?" So, he didn't say, "We're gonna have to have more money." He didn't say that it's fair or anything, but he just said, "They, they cut a half million out." They, they cut it out of places that he thought they would be able to save, I think, to cut out some fuel money out of the schools, transportation.
There's a big chunk they said, "No, you can't."
You build a fort.
Fortunately, we've had a warm winter so far, so maybe, you know, that was, I think that was $167,000.
But here's the reality that we have, we're gonna have to face, I'm afraid, and we did face it last year, too, is your biggest expense comes down to people. That's where your expense is, is bodies, warm bodies. And we're one of the few school systems that did not lose people. And I think the state, you know, the state even told them, you know, that you, you know, this is a mandate program, you just need one teacher regardless. So, we hope it don't come down to that, but at the end of the day, I think the county managers write each other, but that, that's a discussion that, you know, that's, when you, when you hear them talk about this money, and we ask about reversion money, which I think is absolutely, I mean, the money that allocated from there, and was that a fire system that, whether they done that? I don't think so at all. I mean, if you look at the number, it's gonna be an interesting conversation. But they are trying, I think, you know, I think the N.M. Superintendent and two of our members, I believe, each other will agree that they're doing everything they can to, to make it work.
And Dr. Duncan, I think he's done an excellent job. Yeah, he's, he's a very conservative man, and very good at what he does. And I've had ever faith in him and the board that they'll, they'll do what they have to do about this budget.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a challenge, because school system, you know, it's over on the board, it's over for a long time. They usually look at how much more we're gonna get next year, instead of how much less are we gonna have. And so, it's a complete reversal of the way it used to be, when you, when you're looking at, everything was growing, the tax base was going, the revenues were growing, the school system's growing, and you can predict that how much more growth and development you wanna have, when it turns around the other way, and it's going backwards in resources, you have to start thinking in a different way. What can I get by without, that doesn't affect the financial.
Well, you have, you have to do like, like we've done, like the county's done. You, our budget's 12, 15 percent less than it was six years ago, but we seem to be running okay, everything working well, but you, you need to find those things that are, I would say, non-essential expenditures, or places you, don't cut it out, but you cut 10 percent off of it, or, and that's something they didn't do, they didn't just do the, they line up.
And hopefully, if they make cuts, even if, if they can restore our A.D.N. with the flexibility, we're okay.
Yeah.
If they do that.
If they do, that's, that's the big thing. And if they, if they would do that, then it would be, and I, if, if y'all heard what I heard, I, I think I heard the Senator say that he's supported that 100 percent, if I did.
He, he has.
And so, hopefully, he'll carry the water on that furnace.
Well, that's just a, just kind of a thumbnail, that's an issue we can't solve or resolve today, but you're all aware of it, and if you have your joint meeting with Board of Education, they present what they know, at that time, that'll give you a little bit more to look at. So, that'll be 20, what did it say, when was it?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, so February.
So, we'll move on, while we're on that, Mr. Chairman, you speak to it also, we did have the sheriff that early is on meeting about school security issues, and what, what came out of that meeting, the county manager was instructed, and me and the chairman started to support, I think, the risk of it, too. Carrie Bell, as you know, is sort of the one who oversees the construction and renovations of these schools, and saved us a lot of money over the years. He's gonna get together with the representative of the sheriff's department, probably Mr. Byrus, who's, who's been the SRO for a long time, and go eat school. We still have some schools, the new schools have an entry foyer, and as we put one up, if you remember, three years ago, at the middle grade school, where you can't just go in and got free reign to go in front of the school. We still have several schools that does not have that, that entry point. And so, they are gonna go to the schools and look at not only that, but some other things such as the security locks, the new schools do have, that the teachers can lock the door from the inside. We're looking anyway, that's not the encouraging cost.
Well, this, we talked about it, and we might as well say here, that the cost of putting SRO in every school, you talking about bumping up our budget by $750,000 a year? And that, that's, if, if you're thinking in terms of, "We're gonna do that to prevent this thing happening in Connecticut," then you're fooling yourself, because I think the value of our SROs is beyond that. The value of SROs is what they meant to classrooms, what they meant in education, what they meant in preventing violent acts in the school, they're very valuable. I, I was instrumentally getting that program started, and I support it wholeheartedly. I think we need to, I think we need to have a conversation with the town of Franklin about these schools that are in town, Ronnie.
Well, I couldn't agree more.
You know, you've got East Franklin High School, could, could we have a conversation about, maybe just working with city police, and maybe try to, them providing more, and I'm all for that.
And to follow up, Mr. Chairman, you will, with a meeting with the sheriff that you have, and as liaison with the sheriff's department, in the sheriff's budget, he will be requesting two SROs in his budget. That's what we've talked about. He has no great expectation of getting two SROs. After meeting not only with him, physically, but also with the folks at the school, who deals with these, some of these students that are really troubled, and they go to the mental health side of it, that I've been involved in, too, and so we're, we're trying to work through these things. They've cut back on the days that, in other words, when they say that student has to come back to school regardless of what trouble he's been in, the school system has to accept him, period. There's no, you know, whatever. And so, we're dealing with, and the school, that's part of the school system, a lot of people don't understand, and so, and it's expensive, not always expensive, but the instance that took place here with the teacher, so is SRO, like Kevin said, you know, would they be preventive? If something, if, if a tragedy that happened, could that help? I don't believe it would hurt, I think it would help.
Sure.
I think having anybody there, that these SROs provide a, provide a whole lot better, more, more service than just that. I mean, these kids will come and talk to these SROs about a lot of things, but don't talk about the SRO.
All I meant, Ronnie, that those massacres are, are, I think that's a product of a warped society, and to some degree, and mental illness, not necessarily lack of security, even though I agree with you, having an SRO there, would that be a positive thing? The answer is yes, it would.
But anyway, I just wanted to make the board aware of it, in our conversations, and that, and so if we worked it through the sheriff's budget, and as county manager and the sheriff, does that say that we'll get two SROs? No, we'll have to be up to this board and have a budget come down. But I think in the sheriff's budget, and, because he's come out, that's elected official, which he certainly can, and, you know, he's most supportive of SROs, and makes a good argument, so that will be part of, part of that budget, and, and we will work on that. Maybe we'll be the first ones to work on it with him, and we'll all work together. And you see how it comes in? And if we can, if we, if this board feels that we can provide one more this year, or two more, or, but it's a, it's not gonna get no cheaper. It's, and you will, you'll hear this also, he, there is one officer that's ready to go, that's trained up and ready to go, and, because juvenile law is different than anything else that you'll encounter, it's a totally different animal, so I just want to let board be aware of that, so they wouldn't, "What is this?" So, that's, and to end our conversation that we had with the school board, they have, they will also have their personnel as, as they visit the school, to see what security measures can be taken, and there's some real tough ones, Highlands for one, how they change classes, how we're doing for open, we're tall with high, and one of the other. And we're gonna look at those, and so very well could see that come back, and as the county manager and superintendent really gets down to nitty gritty, and some capital improvements for all these entryways, and in the Highlands, probably the most expensive one, because of the situation, and, and just the, the layout of it.
But it's funny to say we agreed in that in our liaison meeting, just procedures and, and we're looking at all that. The other thing, Ronnie, the lunch program, did you want to mention that?
Well, the lunch program, what we decided at that meeting is, the sheriff brought up that, that they had done in the past, that they'd be productive, that, that every opportunity, that one deputy go to a school to have lunch.
And breakfast.
And, and just to have, not only have a presence there, but to, to have a relationship, and especially some of these younger kids, at more ease, having somebody with a uniform there. And, and we agreed to, to go ahead with that program, they're gonna meet with their superintendent, it works, the lunch food program works much like our enterprise fund at Catalentin, that's how the lunch program works, so they have to account whatever money's in the system, that's what makes that system work. Does that sound right, Mr. Mayor?
Because it's a standalone operation, so it's in a regular, it's in a budget, but they generate all the money from their meal sales, to pay for the costs of the school and the cafeteria.
And they were gonna meet with the lunch director, and through that, Chairman and myself certainly supported that, if it come out, you know, you're not talking, you're talking about regular money, and they seem to think that they would, they could certainly contribute to the lunch, but suddenly they gotta pay for that lunch.
Right. I talked to Dr. Duncan since then, and he said they done some preliminary numbers, and he thought maybe they could cover it through some of their current expense money, wouldn't be. I mean, if you had, he did the math, if he had an officer eat once a day at every school, it's, it's a couple thousand dollars a year.
And we explained to Robbie this, what my homecoming ever, that everybody went.
Not five officers in one school.
That's right.
Go for breakfast one day, lunch the next day, and just get those officers in the school one more time, they're already paid staff, they're paid to be somewhere, and it just gets them in front of those kids.
So, it's tragic, because those parents and families are feeling that in Connecticut, you know, I think not only us, but across our state, and certainly, we've had this conversation with some other counties that are joining our county, that some good can come out for that, that might happen in the long run. So, that's, that's the goal here. That's about all I had from that meeting.
February 7th, 10th.
How long have we had SROs passed through?
They started in, 2002?
Yeah, 2001 or '02, yeah. The first, when we hired Bill Harrell.
That's right.
That's a Jimmy Cleveland, we hired him in Franklin High School, and then did that, I think that was '01, hired Donnie Segal, and he went to make the middle school. He's been there since.
How long has he been up there?
Well, since probably '02, probably 10 years. And that's a perfect example, Donnie Segal has become a part of that school community. Those kids know him, they respect him, and you go up there and talk to the principal, or talk to him, or talk to Robbie, and find the number of things that he has helped prevent or minimize, as far as violence and that kind of thing.
And Robbie also, Mr. Chairman, he said, you know, that the communication level between the school personnel and the SRO, they have sat down and they've sort of reworked that, and to make that more of an open communication, that everybody, especially the SRO knows what's going on in the school. And so, that's also part of this, is, is just better, better communications with those people.
We do a little program, Rotary Club, with the middle school students, and we sit down and go over little scenarios, and one of them might be of, somebody in your class brought a gun to school, what would you, what would you do about it? And every time that one comes up, or my, whatever, it's, most everybody in our group will say, "I'd go see Mr. Segal." And so, that's, that just points out what you're saying, that they really, they really depend on him, and, and for safety, that makes them feel good knowing somebody's there in case they need it. Probably won't have a tragedy like that in Connecticut, but it's good to have. They do more to just wear your, 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 your.
Oh, yeah.
They have, well, frankly, so the, unless you're with current expense or whatever, but our operations will, will look forward to meeting them, see what we can work together on that. The other issue that we talked about was our, our Highlands school renovation, and talked about that, and we're on track, and we talked about it at the facility meeting, just to make sure everybody understands where we are. We've got two tracks going here, one on the financial track, and one on the construction and renovation track, and so what we, what we have to do is, in order to do, go ahead and borrow the money, even a million and a half, under the QSA program, is we have to get the final approval. There's no big problem with that, final approval, local government commission. Local government commission requires that we have all our permits and all our, and our bids in hand before they act on it. And because of our schedule on design, putting out for bids and so forth, the earliest we can probably get that on the agenda at the local government commission, and we're already can jump in here if we need to, is get things submitted in March, have a bid open in March, and be on the agenda for approval at the meeting in April. Local government commission makes the first Tuesday of each month, they only get once a month. And if we can get all the stuff that we need at the end of March, then the local government commission will give us approval for the financing, the million and a half dollars for that project at their meeting the first, the first Tuesday in April. And like we said before, that's, that'll be end up in a zero net interest cost to the county. In order to do that, we've asked the architect, and this project will be very similar to the projects that we've done, I think the county's been pretty successful, instead of, instead of just saying to the school, "Here's money, go out and do it," we've basically managed those projects on the county side with coordination of the schools, and I think this worked out pretty good. In order to do that, we're gonna have to have collateral for the loan, which means just probably each one, and then on the Mountview School, and, and all the other schools that we've done renovations, or the school board actually will bring the property over to the county, that will be collateral for the loan, when the loan's paid out, and we just dig it back to the Board of Education, and during that interim, they operate with the lease from the county, and the operations, like they own it. So, the school board's aware of that, and they're gonna take that up at their meeting in February, I think it is in February, not, not this month, go ahead and take an action, actually to transfer that Highlands school property to the county stand for the purpose of this QSA funding. And we'll need another, a local agreement between the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners, outlining all the details on that, and Chester's working with their attorney to get all those things worked out.
We're, we've done it, Ronnie.
So, that, the, the schedule, basically, as, as Mike Watson, the architect, was to complete plans about February the 15th, have a pre-bid meeting with contractors on February the 27th. I will mention this at this time, too, in the past, what we've done, such as after the specifications, we're out there to support out for bids, we found that it's better, you usually end up with better, more qualified, more qualified bidders if you have a, a screening system for qualified bidders ahead of time before you clear it out for bids. We've done that on several of the projects we had in the past, we brought it up before the facilities committee, and nobody had any objection to do anything other than that, so we'll ask for people who are interested, and they'll submit their qualifications, and then the architect will review them, check their references and so forth, make sure that they're financially stable, solid, and complete the job, and narrow the list down to every and any qualified bidders we have, and then allow them to bid on that job. And so, the actual contract will be left on the county, instead of the school board, so y'all need to be aware of that, in case you wanna change anything along with those plans. But we ended up with some very good qualified bidders on the projects we had, some of them in H and M, I think they've done most of the work, but that does guarantee they'll get the next contract. But anyway, have the pre-bid meeting with interested contractors on February the 27th, receive bids on March the 19th, and I won't go into shop drawings and all that kind of stuff, but he said the contractor should be mobilized and ready to start by May the 26th, and finish by August the 25th, I think school starts the 26th this year, does that right?
That's right.
So, that's the time that we, we actually, because of our financing schedule, shared that with the architect, and he's gonna shave off another week, I believe, was it a week? Off his schedule, and hold it to meet this deadline, so he said he'd be able to do that. And.
What date you say you should start again?
August 26th this year. This past year, it was like August the 9th. It wasn't as good if we'd had that extra time, and I always, we did, this time of year, August. So, that's a pretty aggressive schedule, but it's not, it's not a, a project, and all of a sudden it'll be done, after they get through doing, you'll know that you've done electrical and all that, and all those kinds of things. done, electrical and all that, and all those kinds of things. Do you have a site that was chairman?
I don't think you did.
I think it was the only one. The other, other, other one, that's infrastructure. The only really, the only, the only things we have in infrastructure right now is finishing up the Swiss Colony water system, which we hope we can do this spring. There's still a need, and I'd like to throw this out, there's still a need, I think, to get a water line out from town, maybe through Windy Gap to the airport, serve the airport eventually, and also the elementary school out there. That's the best long-term, year-to-year water supply for, for that. For three reasons, we thought it was a good idea to try to look at the possibility of running it that way. The folks on Windy Gap Road have a really bad problem with water out there. It's got a lot of iron or whatever it might be, and it's got a lot of septic on there too. They can't tie directly to the well water, but there's been an order of the mound of people out there that suffer some illnesses. And they, although they can't prove, they feel like if they were on this water system, they would at least eliminate that as one of their concerns. If we could get a water line, work on the town of Franklin, out of Windy Gap, the airport road, go down Airport Road, we could serve the airport, which would be a safety feature for that. Since the airports are getting more traffic now than it used to, jet traffic, airport, it'd be good to have a good steady water supply for that. If you're going to get that close to the aisle of the school, you might as well serve the school at the same time. So there'd be free benefits if we were to do that. We've talked to USDA about grants and loans to do that. Linda is willing to work with us on that. What we'll need to do is talk to the town of Franklin and see if they're interested and doing a cooperative agreement with us to pursue that. And I'll just throw that out, what has worked. We do have, or we have had, a water, our school water sewer committee on this board, I don't know if we still do or not. If we do, then we should, even though we're big on that, because he knows more about it than all the rest of us, but.
He's on that, he's the laser on for all the water and the hell we have to do.
But I'd like to, I'd like to have a meeting with the folks at the town soon to bring that idea back up and see if that's possible.
Some orange or shake.
Sometime in March, maybe, or whatever, or April, but sometime this spring. That's the only infrastructure that I'm talking, I'm thinking of, water sewer at this point in time, unless y'all have something else that you're pursuing. The other.
Just follow up. Mr. Mayor, you know, and I did meet with that community, that Windy Gap, and what we found out is a lot of those folks, they just, they just basically use their water to wash their clothes and, you know, certainly not to use it in consumption anyway, the wells are so bad. And they have a lot of concerns about, you know, what's going on in that community. But I guess they, we met with, what, at least twenty, twenty-five residents of that community? And, and that's how we got the money, of course, for the river bend, because their water system failed. Same thing that, that served the community. So hopefully, you know, actually meeting with some other funds that probably won't be available, we heard from the senators, the Clean Water Trade Fund and the Rural, you know, L.R.A. Holls, and the Rural Center, and those funds are probably going to be reduced. Drafted, they've already been reduced draft, you're probably going to see another reduction. So hopefully, through USDA and the cooperation of town, but it's good if, if you know these folks from Windy Gap, it takes about a five-minute conversation, it's worth it. They'll, they'll give you a good opinion.
They're, they're really interested, people up there are pretty vocal about that, and they said, if you can do anything to help us, we appreciate it. We've, we've explored different options and we haven't come up with a final solution. We even talked to engineers and had a preliminary engineering report done on what it would cost to get out there. We have that already in place, we did, we did that a year or two ago. That's something to look at. The other transportation issue is, we just found out recently the airport's going to be getting another grant to widen the runway, I think, to seventy-five feet, which will make it more safe. I guess the good news on that is that property's already been disturbed, so you don't worry about archaeology or anything like that to go with it. But they will be coming back to the Board of County Commissioners at some point in the future to present that additional FAA grant that they're looking at and ask them for county support on global matching and that. So that's something to keep your heads up when they make that presentation. I'm sure Ms. Gregory and the other folks on the airport authority will schedule a time to come and talk to y'all about that, that's something to keep in mind. Of course, the last, and I guess this is the year of recreation, infrastructure and capital improvements, and we're in that process. I don't know what else I can say about that. When we were putting all this together, as one of the items discussed, we didn't know if we might have several discussions on that property. But the one thing that's being done this year, in this fiscal year, is the renovations for the pool and the pool house, and that'll be done. So that won't be a big project for next year. But the long-term capital project, if the, if the project goes through for the Parker Meadows site facility out there, that'll do something. I think, I have to look that into the budget and very forget, Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant, we have three years to use that. I don't think we'll take three years to spend or have a million dollars, but, and then you're able to afford more funding. But that's, that's the next big major project, is that that goes through after our new diligence in April, proves that property can be used for the intended purpose dictated by the county commissioner. And that'll be the next big major capital project that we're working on. And that's something that will be developed over a number of years and phases, not all at one time. You won't be spending billions of dollars in no time on there. It'll be something that'll have to be worked in over time based on available resources and, and grant money. So, and that, I think, I think several years of development, that, that comes about. But this year will be the big one to start. We have this actual person property and developing at least the first phase of the ball fields out there. Those are, those are the capital projects that, that I see on the horizon, the ones that we're evolving now, looking at next year. I don't know of any other major projects. But if you take a look back, if you look back more than the last year, you'll see the county's been involved in the last five years for a large number of capital improvement projects. Most of those, as Laura said, involve stool. Eighty-eight percent of our debt is from building school construction and renovation. And I believe after the, after the Highlands renovation project, we'll have spent probably somewhere in the neighborhood of forty, forty-four to forty-five million dollars on school, on investment in our school facilities. It should put, along with the improvements that were made before, making county facilities second to none in this region. So I think that's a wise investment for the long term. Those are, those are the capital projects and the school issues that we're dealing with. And Mr. Chairman, if y'all have anything to add to that, or any issues or suggestions or changes or whatever, that's all I have at this time on that particular area.
Anything else on the, any kind of infrastructure or capital improvements? We thought we'd just throw those things out, sort of discuss where, where we've been, where the county, what they've done before, where you invested, got there, it's been going on for a while.
Well, this is, you know, we started this conversation about, you know, the first option was get the children out of trailers at school. That was the first time. So when we started this, we, we had a graph much similar to what we already have this one, we showed, you know, our debt level, and that starts coming down. So we want to try to replace one debt and not have to increase taxes. And for the, pretty much, that's, that's exactly where we're, where we're at. So if you look at the graph that Laura showed earlier today, with the renovation of Highland Schools, that, that may drop significantly over the next few years. So that's a good thing.
I had a good talk with Senator Davis that time over the last few weeks. He, he was talking about the school projects, and he, he was pretty instrumental, as a lot of people have been through the years in developing the school plan. And he, he made a comment to me, he said, I guess I've raised my hand as much as anybody. He voted, he, these school projects, but they're behind us now. And had, and he made a comment, had we not done anything, I mean, nothing, we would be where we were fifteen years ago, plus the depreciated state fifteen years in the future. So anyway, it just.
What we built these schools for the top square foot was probably the best in the last fifteen years.
Because this plan was started in nineteen ninety-eight, set nice. Recreation, Jack and I had lunch with the Town of Highlands manager, Bob Frye, and Commissioner Brian Steeler on Wednesday of this week. One of our points of topic was the Highlands Pool, which is where we agreed to try and help put a Band-Aid on to get things repaired. I know some of you have looked at the pool, in my opinion, I think it was actually in worse condition. The Franklin Pool was started in, it was horrible, but one of the reasons I wanted to have that lunch with them was just to mention the topic that if the county's going to be putting in thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars, whatever we need to put a Band-Aid on that, that I would rather see the town put in a new pool if they would be willing to help do that. And they both, did I correct the pronoun? But I, I, from what I gathered, they both seemed very receptive that I, that I did that, that I had on the joint cost on it. And I definitely appreciate it.
Did you, what you had to reiterate right there? You had to have this conversation privately, but that pool is actually owned and managed by the Town of Highlands.
That's correct.
The difference, the pool here is a function of making county, which is our complete responsibility. And that is, we, we give, we give Highland Recreation money, just like we do for the, for the Franklin location, but that pool is, is owned by the Town of Highlands.
That's, that's, that's great. But we, we do help reimburse them for their recreational needs. It's my understanding, and I'm from the recreation director up there, that there's actually more people who use the Highlands Pool than Franklin Pool during the months of July and August. And the rest of the months is a different story.
They should try it.
That's right. Usually the skateboard park. They were going to take it to their retreat, is that correct? They were going to do their retreat in February and discuss how they're going to do the tactic. But again, I, I would personally, I'm not telling y'all what to do, but I think as a board, we'd be better spending our money if we were helping, if we're going to dedicate that money to putting a Band-Aid on that pool of River City, or just go towards a new pool for them, and just going towards Band-Aid. I don't think it really mattered, probably mattered this board, which one we spent the funds.
Did you talk about making it a year-round pool, or just a two-month-a-year?
I think they're going to discuss that at the February retreat. There was a discussion about that, that they were going to call for a new pool. And then they also said that they were required to have a pool. Is that correct?
I think the, the pool that they have up there was probably built back in the days of the Bureau of Environmental Recreation Land and Water Conservation Trust Fund. It's kind of like our part of grants now. It was built on a dollar-for-dollar match, and under those terms back then, which is seventies and eighties and so forth, if you took that money and built something, but you were guaranteed, you were guaranteed that you would maintain that for a X number period of time. And so they're looking to see what that period of time is on that, to see if that has to carry on. That would affect on whether they do something for that pool, or actually build another one, I think. But they're going to look at all those options, do some research on it. I guess the thing I would say is, there's not any, there's not any rush for us to go and write in and check and help break number of dollars per pool repair, build outside what they're going to do. And then, and then, and if we do, we mean the county, do something with the Town of Highlands, we'll have to have a local agreement with them, because that property belongs to them, it's under their jurisdiction.
That's right.
But, but we had, we had a good, we had a good lunch meeting with the manager and the, one of the board members up there. We talked about, you know, that plus use of facilities up there, the old, the ambulance office that were there, that were used up there. Now, part of it was the police department. And to give a little history on that, back in nineteen eighty-five, the county worked out of, created the Town of Highlands. So the Highlands made the property available, and the county built the building, and then transferred it to the Town of Highlands. The Highlands transferred, leased it back to the county for forty-nine years. It's a little complicated, and then they reserve part of it for the police department. Now, the police department booked into another building that they renovated, and there's some space available, and they're going to ask to give us some use of that space. And so they're, they're, they're considering doing that, because we, we have a need for a stopoff in Highlands sometimes for our building inspectors and our health people, social services people who might be in that area, sheriff's deputies, any other people that we have. If they have, if they have an office up there where they can go in and have access to their high-speed internet, they can connect back with our main offices down here, upload and download information and save time instead of driving back and forth, and also to do paperwork and whatever. So they're going, they're going to let us have at least a couple of those rooms that they were using for the police department for some of our, usually we got details worked out on that. And we're also using a little piece of property up there for a communications tower for our emergency communications, and the Town of Highlands uses it for some things too. So we're working on a deal with them to get a long-term solution to that. We basically had, in the past, have a short-term lease on that, and it's only six hundred so an acre. And so we talked to them about the possibility of just transferring that to the county. We see, we usually would transfer it back to them, but I'm not sure it's much bigger than this room.
About the size of this room.
And so, and so we're working on all that. And so we can, we can maintain and control that whole access with them to have accessibility and use of it for their home communication needs. But we're working with that, and that's going to take a while, commissioner takes working closer with folks up there. So it's just an ongoing conversation. And this is another good example of city, county, working together to try to meet the needs of people that we serve. So I think all the time, whenever we can do a project like this, involves both units of government, and it benefits everybody, I think we're going to have to work on that. So we got a good, we got a good start on a couple of those things up there, and just what we have in some of the projects here in Franklin.
Thank you, I appreciate you turning up this week.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. That's all I had.
Anybody else in the place that's got where we are?
The next thing on there was, the last thing, I guess, back, I guess this would be discussed even before, certainly before I came on the board with David or Mr. Tate. But from what I recall, when our sheriff came to us and indicated to us that his, he had done some preliminary investigation, he was losing deputies, called to Highlands, maybe to Clayton, Georgia, I don't know, Town Franklin, and there was a fairly significant pay difference in his deputies and some of these other officers. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, this goes back in the early spring of two thousand eleven.
Yeah. So, so the board agreed to make a small adjustment in the deputies' pay, which we did. And then also, if you remember, last year, I guess we gave the county employees three percent.
Year before.
Year before, two years. Last year didn't do anything. Right.
Oh, what if you think it's not bad?
Two years. You know, because you're.
Current year we have.
No, okay, I'm staying correct. So with that, Jack suggested that we do, sort of do an overall pay study, look at, have a pay compares and that kind of thing. Of course, we're making a commitment that we're going to do or not do, and that was a discussion, so I think.
It's been ten years, it's been ten years since anybody seriously did. I took a look at their application, made money, job script, responsibility and so forth. And so things are different now than we were ten years ago, and responsibilities have changed, job script has changed, since we've changed things because of blowing up additional work on people without hiring additional people and so forth. And so we were, we were talking about, basically, we had started through law enforcement about to take a look at that and see if we had somebody who's an objective entity come in and take a look at what we're paying and what the goal and rate was, minimum salaries and so forth, and people in that position. And so as a conversation progressed, the board decided, well, if we're going to do it, take a look at the sheriff's office for all, we can do it for all employees, take a look at the entire county, all employees. So we're not saying, we're not saying that one department is more important. Of course, the sheriff's office, they go out there with their, with their guns and their bases and their uniforms, and they're bulletproof vests, and every day that we don't do that in my office, or in the, the, the social services office, or the health department, or the solid wage, or DMS, or whatever. But, but they're all important. So what the board did, the board referred, let's just do, just take a look at, see where we are as far as what salary should be for the work that's being performed. In the past, from my review of the salary and pay plan the county has, there are a lot of inequities in there. There's, there's some that are really, really low, below even what the minimum should be for that job, and some that were changed by whoever. that job, and some that were changed by whoever it pleased, or a lack of work, or a mental word, or attitude. Spring City came in and took a look at, you know, our pay plan, what are we paying for the jobs that our people are doing? And what's the minimum salary? What's the salary range for that job? Whether you're a janitor, or a finance director, or county manager, they do leave, but they did everybody else. What's the range for that job? If you're going to hire somebody right now and expect them to do the job that you want to do, you know, what kind of salary are you looking at to base them on to do that? So what we found out, and Mike has some more information than I do, and I'll let him, let you jump in here, is we found that, and they started sometime in the late summer of two thousand eleven, or maybe early fall, and they worked on this all through two thousand eleven into two thousand twelve, and they actually reported to the board back in July two thousand twelve, and said, here's our findings, this is what we found. And they had a little question and answer there. We were going to ask, we had tried to maybe get Mr. Transylvania to come back and share it, but he will come back if we need him to, he just couldn't make it today. But what we found out, Mike correct me if I'm wrong, is over half of our employees below minimum?
Fifty-five percent of our employees are below what the minimum would be under the new pay scheme, based on market data that Spring City did from there, sir.
So over half of them were under minimum, if you say, and that's taken from most recent data, it's not, and we looked, we had, they had like ten units of government, they looked at, they compared it to, and we're not trying to keep up with Bonham County, and we're not trying to keep in line with Clay County or Swain County either, we're looking at what it takes to qualify people to do the job that y'all want them to do with the county at a decent salary. And so what we're asking you to do is, we've had the study, and it's been presented, and we know what it's going to be, and our goal, from our challenges then, was how can we fund this without using one-time money, and without increasing the need for raised taxes to pay for? So what we had to have was a source of money that would cover the needs, and be a recurring source of money that would not affect our need to raise the taxes or deplete our fund balance. Now, I think we've done that. We've saved about two point seven million dollars in revenue. We're looking at, we're looking at our debt, we're looking at, not something we've paid credit for, but our sales taxes coming back up now, we're looking at a little over three percent increase in our sales tax for this year, maybe next year too. So we feel pretty confident that we do have enough money in our reserves and the money that we've saved to be able to implement this pay study. And basically, what we'll do is bring everybody who is below minimum up to minimum. Those people who happen to be at a minimum or above minimum, we give them a two percent. Well, if you read the news lately, you know that everybody lost two percent because of the income, the social security went back up. So basically, all that would do for everybody else is bring them up to what they were last month. But I feel, especially some of our lower-paid people, on the bottom of that scale are on the minimum. We had people who've been here for several years who weren't even making ten dollars an hour, and they're good employees and they do a good job. Like I said earlier, these aren't faceless bureaucrats, these are the people that we're our friends, our neighbors, our relatives, the people we go to church with. We do well in this county, we've also got good employees who do a good job. And I think it would send a real, real strong message to the employees out there that we appreciate what you're doing, we've been working on this for a year and a half, and we'd like to go ahead and implement this to bring you up to minimum, or help you offset a little bit this year, and we can do that without taking money out of fund balance and without causing an increase in the tax rate. And what we'd like to ask you all to do is consider letting us go ahead and implement this classification pay plan beginning, end of this month for the balance of this year. And that would be less than one percent of what our salaries are right now, because even two percent would be for a full year. That's, hardly a day or week goes by that employees don't ask, or somebody, or does that take management, they're talking about doing it? So we're asking, I think, in my case, and Laura's view, on behalf of the employees in the county, not necessarily me, but them, I think this is a fair thing to do. We've got the resources to do it, I think it would do a great deal for our employees to be able to implement the plan that we've asked somebody to come up with, and it's not personalities, it's just what the job calls for. If I had to answer any questions, you might.
What are you talking about? Four years? Implement this?
Well, we were talking about doing three things, Paul, we're bringing people up to minimum, giving them two percent, and then giving people credit for time and service. We can't do all three of those things. If you did that, you're talking about a million, one hundred?
One point more, a little more.
We can't do that. So we were saying, well, if we can't do, give people any time for credit for time and service, can we bring at least ones below minimum up to minimum and do the two percent for everybody else? And in order to do that for a full year, it's going to cost us how much?
Seven hundred and fifty-four thousand.
We have.
Does that include the match, the social security match?
That includes all, that includes everything, salary and range and so forth, everything. We want to know what the total cost is going to be, not just salary.
Is that still a net, no extra money out of pocket need, or, I mean, if we went out to increase taxes to cover that existing tax?
If this was going to create a tax increase for next year, it wouldn't be recommended at this time. No, this will not affect next year's, as far as requiring any tax increases to be covered. So we can do it out of existing revenues.
So how much was it? Seven hundred more?
Seven fifty-four.
Seven fifty-four for a full year.
For a year.
That's for a full year for twelve months.
And this is just for the fifty-five percent we're talking about, and plus the two percent?
This, everybody this below, does that mean whatever that new minimum for their position is, would come to that minimum?
So you're talking two hundred and thirty-one people?
And if you're in range, you get two percent.
So you.
So this, this is not, so this is not meaning that average pay in those ranges you're talking about?
This is not meaning the average, this is right up to the minimum.
Not sure.
No, we can't compete, we can't compete with Henderson, Bonham, places like that, that have much higher pay scales. This is based on our size of county and services that we have, and if we put it up to the range that we talked about going originally, we're talking well over a million dollars.
Okay, so what you're asking, four hundred and seventy-four thousand total?
That's for a full year, not for a balance, so this year, it won't be that much, it'll be five months or five quarters.
That's in question for a whole year.
That'd be for a full year. Full year salary and all fringe benefits included with that, for all four hundred fifteen employees.
How much is it for the five months, you know, for the rest of the year?
I'm sorry. What?
The five-month cost.
The five-month cost, I've got to figure it just over three hundred and fourteen thousand.
And the people that come up to minimum, would they also get the two percent money?
No, they just get the minimum.
They would come to the minimum of the salary.
You either get the minimum or two percent.
Could we see a list of who this, who the folks are and what they do, that's below? I mean, I know you can read the study, and I've read it over and over and over, first of all, it's hard to read.
I like to read the study.
And. Have you got a copy of it, Paul?
No. And I'm coming in on the tail end of this, and I appreciate what Jack said, is about qualified, excellent county employees. I used to be one, and I've worked for a lot of them while we were friends. But in reality, our county's not much different than Jackson or Transylvania in the quality of employees. I think most government, public service employees are dedicated, especially in this mountain range, Mount Reed, because I worked for these other counties also, qualified, great people. But I appreciate what Chairman Corbin mentioned earlier, is that we are in a recession. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying let's not do this, we're talking about it, that's what we need to do. We paid for the study, we funded it, this needs to be brought up and discussed and talked about. But be reminded that in the private sector, there are no raises. I talked to a lot of people, there are no raises. People in the private sector are losing, my best friends are bankrupt, they've lost their houses, they have no options. And I'm, yes, let's talk about this and look at it, and if y'all want to put action today, I don't know enough about the data to vote for it, but, and we do appreciate these county employees, and they've been hit hard too. Fuel's going up, the three dollars a half a gallon, I mean, milk's up, all, everything is up. Public service employees have been hit hard too.
Keep in mind too, that the people we have worked for the county, that's not the only, that's not the only job, their husbands and their wives work in the private sector, maybe in NR two, there are some of the same ones who've lost their jobs and lost their other businesses and so forth, so I don't want to, I don't want to say that we're one group and there are another group, God, we're mixed together, the public and the private, because it affects both of them.
Yeah, yeah. There is some, I mean, there is a difference. There is a difference in the private sector and the public sector employee, and these are families. I mean, when I worked there, I had a second job, and I was in management, I had a second job, my wife worked, I mean, it's tough, and I don't even know what, I know when I worked at the county every two years, they'd do a pay study every two or three years, and they'd throw it in the ditch, you know, nothing ever came of it. And it is disheartening to employees, it would be best to say, hey, if we're not going to seriously consider this, let's don't even do the study, let's don't spend a thousand, every penny of the thousand, I don't know what it costs to do the study, they're not cheap. It's kind of offering them a false statement to carry it in front of them, you know, hey, y'all work hard, we're going to do a study here, and if it's ditched, and that was disheartening to me, the ten years I spent with the county, nothing ever came of it. So I'm glad you're bringing something and making a presentation to address this issue, and I'd love to look at it just to see a little bit more value.
We'll give you a copy of, you know, since you, since you come out and make the give your. And I don't expect to know enough about it, because you haven't been on board that long, but I agree exactly with what you're saying, Paul. There's no use to take the time to do the study if you're not seriously about finally implementing it. An ideal world, you do the study, and the study's finished the first of the year, and you implement the study, and you move on with it. But we hadn't been able to do that. We've had a study that's been, it's, we're coming up on two years now since we started talking about it, and we're coming up on a year.
Remember though, they were six months late giving us results.
Yeah.
That was part of that.
But the process started back in eleven, and we're in thirteen now, so it's, I don't think, we're asking, and I'm speaking not for Jack Gordon, I'm speaking for the county employees that y'all have worked for you, it's not that we're asking to give them anything more than they deserve, we're asking to pay them the minimum for what that job calls for. That's basically what we're asking to do. And I hope we can do it, and we can't, we couldn't do it if we didn't have a recurring source of revenue and able to sustain it. There's no use, I don't want to do like some of our other units have taken federal money or whatever, and the use of the salaries. There's no, you start a program, there's no use implementing this if you don't have a way to pay for it and sustain it after the first year, and so I'm keenly aware of that. I'm not sure everybody, I'm sure that works for the county, understands how that works, but all the projects and all the other things that we do, you've got to have a way to pay for that, whether it's a capital project or whether it's an ongoing expense, capital projects and so forth, we've been able to do a lot of those, and I think those are good. But I'll just say this, and I'll answer any questions I can, every once in a while, you got to sharpen the saw if you're going to keep cutting wood, and what we're trying to do is keep our people, and right now, they're good, they're glad to have a job. Everybody, from the, from the one who comes in at night and mops the floors, and the one who works in whatever department it might be, they're glad to work for the county, it's a good place to work. I think this would be, this would pay a lot of dividends, and although we're not raising a lot of big salaries in there, it sends them a message that this board of county commissioners and the county managers know what you do, we appreciate what you do, and this is our way of paying your fair wages for the work that you do, and that's really motivation for our program.
It would be great though, when you say we found money to pay for this in government, and I applaud you and Laura for saving us two or three million dollars on financing, that's a brilliant move. It would be great if we could take that savings and maintain that savings through the next few budget cycles, just like the QZAL thing in Highlands, we're paying off one debt, and we're replacing with other. You know, finding that money is great, you're finding ways, and that's why you get awards, you find a way to save money, but as long as that's allocated for something else, then you never really get ahead in the game of cutting overall spending, which is an issue that I think we're going to be forced to face in the next few years.
If our issue was that we're covered up in debt, and we need to make payments, and everything that we came in would not be going for this, it'd be going to the debt service, if we were doing that, but we're really, we're really not hurting that much, and I'll give you an example, I have to look at fund balance and the budget, and we've got a pretty good fund balance, and if my goal is to get the fund balance up to fifty percent, I say take the money, stick it in fund balance, and let's get a fifty percent fund balance. We don't need a fifty percent fund balance. We've got a fund balance now available for a raise of about thirty percent, thirty-eight percent of our operating budget, so we're not hurting for money as far as having our reserves and having our savings there. I guarantee ninety-plus counties in the state would give anything to be where we are as far as that goes, so we don't need to save for the sake of saving, we need to take, all we do basically is take the resources that we get from the people in this county and turn it back into services for them, and that's all we're trying to do in this case. So if we were below on our fund balance, I say, yeah, don't do anything, save all the money you can, put it back, build up your fund balance. If we were covered up in debt, and we need to make sure we have enough money to cover the county with extra money, put that money aside, take care of your debt. But we're in good shape in both those areas.
Do I have to finish your first?
No.
I personally do not have a problem with this at all. The county employees are our greatest asset, in my opinion. I understand the study must, might not be perfect, I don't like a lot of the comparables, but we're not asking to bring these employees up to the Cadillac or even the average, we're asking to bring the ones that aren't up to minimum up to what they consider a minimum scale. They have a lot more experience of that than probably any of us here do. I do, though, think that we can find some savings following in some of the benefits that we offer, if we study that, and I don't know if we want to do it all at one time or another, but we were talking with David Key just a minute ago, and I think we've got, what, five or seven people getting retired from EMS with thirty-five-plus years. If I'm not mistaken, doesn't the county provide them for life, even past Medicare, age, past everything? I think there's some reason we're looking at, you don't want to change that benefit, in my opinion, you don't want to change that benefit for those current employees, but maybe future employees, we consider switching some of this better around. But again, I don't have a problem with what this board, for employees can do.
You're right, we need to just look at that and see, if that's, like everything else, you've got to look at something, see is that sustainable or not? And that was a big question about the way it is right now.
Well, you've got a situation, do this on you, and the truth is, when those employees hit, and they get sixty-five, what the county's paying for that sixty-five-year-old employee, we would be money ahead, and they would be benefits ahead, if we gave them money to purchase a supplement to Medicare, at Medicare Part D, you could do that, I'm talking a hundred percent coverage, no deductibles, no copays, I mean, I do this for a living, for two hundred bucks a month, and I don't know what you're paying per employee, but it's more than that. It's a lot more than that, and so we're not doing the boys, we're not doing them, the best, plus we're paying more money for us. I think that's significant savings.
You're hitting on what I'm talking about, yeah, we might be giving them that raise now, but we might be taking away some benefits for some future employees, or maybe not, just changing the benefits, we're not necessarily taking them away. And it helps to, helps to balance that out and pay for it, that's exactly what you're talking about, either it's about balance.
It's saying this is not a new conversation, you know, we've had this conversation, with former Commissioner McClellan and I, and Commissioner Davis and I, and several others, and I think we were ready to implement a lot of those things that you're talking about, and about that time, you know, they've been ten different commissioners since I've been on this board. So it takes, you know, like when Paul comes on, it's not fair to Paul just to say, here you go.
See, Jim left for the Senate, and I just arrived for that, Ryan got into the situation you got into.
Right, so they've done a lot of changes went on, and you can't imagine no- Right, and so, there've been a lot of changes went on, and the county manager knows that.
Let me ask you a legal, a legal question, I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just asking the question. If, if a county employee was hired, uh, thinking we're going to keep them on the county plan forever, do you have the option to go with him and say, Chester, I understand that you thought that, but what if we gave you this option and let them make the decision to do that, could, could we do, you're talking about, I mean, guys, you're talking about some, some...
Here, here's another thing to remember though, uh, when somebody, let's say a county employee, works for thirty years, thirty-five, forty, whatever might be, and they qualify for this benefit, you have to have at least that many years in to qualify for this. So, not everybody's going to stay that long to get it. But if you do, and you qualify, what happens then? It's when you qualify for Medicare at age sixty-five, Medicare becomes your primary provider, and the county basically is backed up. We're self-insured, we put money in your name into an account that we maintain, we have control of it, we access it. So, we're not just giving it to somebody else. And so, right now, we do have a really, really healthy fund balance in our, in our medical reserve fund.
But you still have to allocate that money to that.
You're using the chapter of this, you're...
That's a budget.
But, but, but that's the other thing that was mentioned a while ago, Chairman, is that we've been able to maintain our health insurance rates for employees and for, and for dependents for the last three or four years without an increase, uh, because it's been a burden on them. And I told the folks last year when we did the budget, we probably won't be able to do that this year. So, you're going to have to also look at the possibility that we're going to have to raise, uh, uh, your, what you pay for dependent coverage, uh, more than what you're paying this year for your children, spouses, and so forth. So, that's going to cost them more money. That's another reason why it would be good to give them a little bit of money for the upays of the additional costs, going to come up just to maintain where they are.
Chairman, I would recommend that, uh, you know, that, that you do bring this conversation back up. I mean, uh, it's nothing, you know, you, you never know, but we hope that the five of us that's here now is going to be here at least another year or so, two years or four years or so. Uh, I think it'd be a good time and, and, uh, but I think also it'd be a good time just to wrap everything in, you know, if we want to do, what Jim supports, if we want to do that, and I, but what, it might be a good time to wrap it all in one bottle.
It might be, but it might be difficult to do that. I think we can do it, uh, do it in those pieces. I think the thing about the, uh, change of the insurance, and there's some legal ramifications that Chester said that we can't go pass. But I think, uh, most everybody would agree, in most of the places that I've worked at, when you, uh, retired and you qualified for Medicare, the county provided you a Medicare supplement instead of being on the county insurance plan. And like Kevin said, that gives you...
That one, that one move saved you thousands.
Yeah, and we have to do that, uh, draw a line and say, everybody beyond this point, and I think we ought to do that, make it effective, uh, wherever you are.
But I'll be clear to our meeting, everybody else, what, what I'm saying, that would not decrease their benefits. Because when you have Medicare as your primary, which Medicare has about a twelve-hundred-dollar deductible for a hospital, has a hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible on Part B, leaves you with twenty percent to pay on Part B, leaves you with nursing home benefits to pay past twenty days, et cetera, those are things that Medicare don't pay for. When the county plan is secondary, then the county plan has its own deductibles and copays and things like that. So, the employee still has out-of-pocket expenses, whereas if you have a Medicare supplement, they fit like a glove, they're made to fit. You're sort of driving a square peg into a round hole, keeping them on the county plan, it costs more and it's less efficient than if you had a supplement to Medicare. And you, but I agree, you draw a line, it's saying, uh...
Say, beyond this point, this is...
June first, two thousand and...
Do that fine.
From here on...
We need to get that conversation back to the play study, pay study, play study. Does anybody think it's a, would be, I think it would be for me personally, uh, is to go back and, and, you know, I've reviewed it a few times, looked at it, but to go back and give us all a little more time to look at this thing again. And maybe even bring in that guy that, uh, that might be just a work day just for itself, a few hours.
I think it's a, and I told Jack this, my, when you talk about money, if, if you talk about, is it better off in the, in the, uh, county bank account or something else? I look at it two different ways with the money that we have in fund balance for, that we're spending on the public or whatever. That, you got to decide, is that, that money, what's the value in, in county bank account? We're over a twenty-five percent that we'd like to keep, so that's just taking the money...
This is a separate account, Matt.
We're earning, and we're earning what money, what on that money, point something percent, I guess, Lori?
Not a lot.
Not a lot, so that's you keep the bank. Or you take it at one-time expense, and you put it into a project. One, that pays local people to do it. Two, then you've got that benefit for the community. So, to me, that's, that's a yes, that's, that's, that's... But I had to look at this, is, that's going to be a recurrent, that's not, you can't look at that that way. You have to look at it as a recurring expense every year, tends. So, as long as it can pay for itself, I, I agree with Ronnie, I, I think one, I think it'd be unfair of Paul to ask him to vote for abstaining from this today. And I'm not sure what the recommendation would be, I think Jack said he was going to talk about it, but I didn't know. Could we, would it, would it be bothersome to any of you to put this on the agenda for February meeting?
I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is, uh, it's going to take more than fifteen minutes to go over this, and I'd like to try to find out when Mr. Anzamino, would we be able to come up and see if you can have a special call meeting just to deal with this one subject?
It might take a couple of hours, I think.
It will, it'll probably take a couple of hours, because there'll be a lot of questions.
I had one, I had, I, you know, we, he was out, that was during a regular meeting, and, and if somebody had asked all the questions, we'd have been at two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, so, because of that, when, when that was left last summer, and I think having to get it all put in all, so here we are now. But, uh, he offered to come back up at any time, maybe with the board, it takes as much time as we need to go over the study. So, I'd like to find out what his availability is, and ask him to come back up, and maybe y'all have just a work session just on this, if you would. And he could, he could probably answer most of your questions, if not all of them, and give you a better understanding of what they did, how they got what they got, what the impact is, and, and, and just the whole range of information or questions that you may have about that. But I think Mr. Beal is right, you can't do it fifteen or twenty minutes, you're going to have to have a couple of hours probably.
And that's why I don't feel comfortable voting on that now, I think it's due.
Can we ask Mike, can you put a list together, not necessarily the, I mean, you can read this chart, like Jim was talking about the comparables, but can you put our own comparables together, our own list, for that fifty-five percent, who they are, what their job title is, and the two percent?
And who was percent that I asked?
Can, can you do that? I mean, it says fifty-five percent, so each one of them has a different job. But if you try to read that, if you try to read the, what he's got on the book, it gets real confusing, I mean, maybe I just don't understand it.
Now, that, that information is...
Do we ain't putting names through though, on a very...
No, I wouldn't put the names.
The problem, the problem within the names, the problem within the names, you say, I know that one, I don't know that one.
I like the job description, I'd just like to see a comparable and the definition of some of these job descriptions, I mean...
We've got complete, I'll give you a complete set of all the information.
Now, this company that came in and did this, are these recommendations that you have here...
We actually contracted with North Carolina County Commissioner's Association, this is a subcontract with one of their, uh, associates.
Preferred provider.
Preferred provider to the association, so our contract basically was not directed with specific, but it's through the association.
Well, it's compared to what other counties paid employees from similar jobs, right?
Yeah.
And what they did... Ron, can you answer that question, Wes, if, how much would be the maximum percentage we're paying to any one group? Think in other words, if somebody lives...
Depends on where they are, I'll give you an example of that.
All right, let's say for instance, your job, you was making two hundred dollars a year, but they're supposed to be paid four hundred dollars. How much percentage we're going to pay you? What I want to know, I don't want to know which department it is, but what would be the highest would they're looking at percentage?
So much for...
I don't know, we can probably hit that for you, but I'll just say one or two things here. One of them is, we don't spend percentages, we spend dollars.
I understand.
And the other one, and I'm trying not to be facetious, but, but the other thing is...
Make some money.
You're right. The other one is that we have people, if, if you had someone who's been here for a while in a position, and they've always been in that same position, it might be a mechanic, or it might be a maintenance person, or it might be a historian, whatever it is. And they never, they never really gained anything, and all of a sudden, you look at it, and you say, well, that person, if they're making nine dollars and eighty-five cents an hour, or ten dollars an hour now, and for what they do, they should be making twelve dollars or fifteen dollars an hour. To kind of keep, keep that in context, if you take a small amount and increase the percentage...
What you have to remember, if you're bringing somebody from, from where they are to the minimum, then the person with the biggest percentage increase is the one that's been...
Been underpaid for a long time.
Been underpaid as long as a period of time.
And there's that argument you can always make, uh, that, that this is money that's going to be, most of it will be diverted a hundred percent back into our community.
I was going to say, that money is going to come back.
And it turns over approximately four to five times, so, I mean, there's a lot of different ways you can look at it. But I think it's a good idea to, to have a workshop for people like me that, that maybe struggle a little bit and, and identify some little... But we, I will look at closer, and it gives all of us a chance to look at it a bit closer.
I, I think that's fair and reasonable, and I, I think that's a good way to approach it.
So, you're, it was your recommendation that we attack that in two different areas, pay studies?
I think, I think we need to go ahead, this is the thing with the classification, pay plan, and so forth, with our order of, everything's tied into that. I'd like to, I'd like to just concentrate on that. The other one I think we need to do is take a look at our benefit packages as far as health insurance and so forth beyond retirement. And let's, 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 let's make that a separate work, and so, that when, if we do get something to work on that this spring, you can make it effective, uh, June first, or July first, or whatever it might be, and that'll be, you got to draw a line and say somewhere you're going to make a change and jump in and say, okay, if you're already here, you qualify. But anybody hired for this thing...
You can do a whole lot more with prospective employees than you can with existing.
Yeah.
And you must understand, you're dealing with...
I think both those things need to be dealt with, but I think it, instead of trying to wrap them around each other, we've got to think bigger.
Sounds good. What's that, Joe?
I thought that. We want to set, set a time for that, or just...
Yes, see, when this guy...
We can find out when he's available, and I can ask Chairman Paul, if we want a special meeting, he can tell you forty hours.
I'll, and I'll check with him when I do that. Like, like we're saying, I think we should have some deep discussion about this all the way around, and how to look at it more clearly and fast, and look at it.
Goals and expectations. Did you get out at two o'clock?
Definitely.
And you missed that. That's okay.
We, we really done that through this, I don't know that we have anything, I don't have anything else to bring up, ever just to catch y'all for the end of the meeting. If anybody has, if, if anybody has anything else you want to bring up this week, you can do that.
I do, uh, I think our goal, my goal in the, in, in this job is, are you improving the quality of life? Is that what you're working on as a county commissioner, from the people you represent? And I think we're trying to do that. So, I'd ask that anybody on the board, don't make predeterminations whether it's a, whether it's a red park, or the land we're looking at, or new allowances. But remember what it's for, is it, is it going to improve the quality of life, and it's good for the whole community? Uh, so, I would just ask that we all stay open-minded, to get all the facts and figures. Whether it be for employee raises, or, or looking at building, uh, Baldville is going to have to assist community for the next twenty years. So, uh, and I think that this board will be committed, and, uh, so, but our first, our first goal as a county commissioner, according to the book, is how you spend the money. And, uh, and all that goes to, to how, does it accomplish anything for the citizens you represent? So, if we're not doing that, then I could be home having sissy today. So, uh, I think that this board is committed to do that, and I'm, I'm proud to be a part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Beal.
Thank you, Mr. Obama.
Anything else?
I'm great.
Paul, anything else?
I'm your man. He didn't graduate, he didn't graduate.
Yes, yeah, well, uh...
Thank you for your time, uh, thank you for taking the time to do this, and I think our, our staff here, for...
Very much so. Thank you, thank you guys for being here, Mike, appreciate meeting you, any of you.
It was safe and very important, very important for us to know, uh, the direction of the board, and so, we believe this, we appreciate it.
Thank you. And generally, we will need to adjourn, is that right?
Motion to adjourn.
Aye. All pay for adjournments, say aye?
Aye.
Good change, sir. Thank you.